I'd like to call on July 16th County Commissioners Meeting to order. Our first order of business would be invocation by County Manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness and right thought. Teach us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, traditions, beliefs of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Lead us in the pledge will be Ms. Julie Warner, Clerk to the Board.
Loyal agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Sheriff Miller, one of our elected officials. Sheriff Hans Miller, thank you for being here, sir. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda item for this particular meeting. Second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they are signed up to speak and will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner's comment period on the agenda. With no other items being considered separately, I would entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Items on the consent agenda, if any one of the Commissioners wants to remove anything and put it at the end of the meeting, now would be the time to let me know about that.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now at Item Three, the Public Comment Section. Mr. Cotton.
No one has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Item Four, Presentations. Ms. Angela Lee.
All right, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. As one of our accreditation activities and to keep the Board and the public informed, I'll provide a brief update on what Onslow County Government has done to address the opioid issue in our community. The local perspective. From a local perspective, according to local statistics, in 2017, Onslow County Emergency Medical Services dispensed Narcan 355 times. In February of 2018, Emergency Medical Services responded to 54 overdoses, 25 for opioids. In March of 2018, Emergency Medical Services responded to 32 opioid overdoses, and there were three deaths. As of today, Onslow County EMS has treated 57 known opiate overdoses, five of those resulted in deaths. Of the 263 children in foster care, 65% of the cases have substance abuse as a contributing factor. And in the 2016 Community Health Needs Assessment, 23.4% of residents, so almost a quarter, surveyed listed drug abuse as an issue that most affects the quality of life in the community. We also recognize that this is a state issue. According to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Public Health Injury and Violence Prevention Branch statistics, the rate of unintentional medication and drug deaths per 100,000 residents from 2012 to 2016 was 11 for Onslow County. So 11 of every 100,000 residents die due to unintentional drug death. And since 1999, Onslow County has struggled most significantly with deaths due to prescribed opioid medications. Beginning in 2015, deaths from synthetic narcotics were more numerous. Deaths were more common in white males, age 25 to 44, than other demographics with one notable exception. Those with Hispanic ethnicity were more likely to die from medicine or drug overdose in Onslow County than in the state or region. The estimated total lifetime cost based on medical and work loss cost from these fatalities was $53,543,153 in 2016 for Onslow County alone, equating to $286 per resident. To clarify the numbers on the screen, statistics ending in December of 2017 were gathered over a four-year period and resulted in 126 community in a lock zone reversals and over a three-year period, 24 law enforcement in a lock zone reversals. Please note that these numbers do not represent all overdose reversals, just those which were reported to the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition. As in any crisis situation, leaders step forward to provide guidance and direction. The Onslow County Commissioners, in collaboration with the Jacksonville City Council and their leadership teams, partnered to form the Mental Health Task Force and in partnership with various stakeholders to include Carteret and Craving Counties, as well as hospital organizations from each area, were able to secure support and funding for a crisis center slated to open in Onslow County in late 2018. At this time, renovations for the center are approximately 50% complete, and Trillium is working to secure a provider. The Onslow County Manager, Mr. David Cotton, hosted a meeting with the Deputy and Assistant County Managers, along with Health Department leadership, to determine the scope and efforts needed to address the opioid crisis and provide guidance. Two objectives came from that meeting. He asked us to seek funding to hire a coordinator, to oversee and track efforts within the community, and to determine the specific actions that Onslow County Government Offices and Agencies were taking to address the opioid crisis. The Health Director held opioid crisis response meeting with all Department Heads and/or their representatives, which resulted in several areas of focus: data mapping, opioid training, medication disposal education, and grant funding, which was identified as a priority for Onslow County and was also an objective for the City of Jacksonville. The opportunity arose for a joint grant submission with the City of Jacksonville to address the opioid issue in our community. On May the 4th, out of 39 applications from around North Carolina, the Onslow-Jacksonville Grant was selected. The Responding to the Opioid Crisis Grant is a partnership from the UNC School of Government and Blue Cross North Carolina. And over the next two years, we'll provide five regional forums, which we will send our team. They will get to form goals, plan for implementation, and learn from experts on opioid-related issues. We'll also receive $10,000, which will assist us in hiring a community project manager, which we call a coordinator. And we'll also receive $10,000 towards our implementation of our project, which we have yet to exactly determine what that is. Onslow County's current efforts include the establishment of a Quick Response Team, which is a collaboration between law enforcement, emergency medical services, and mental health. We also have our community paramedics, which assist with linking patients who overdose to treatment and also following up with those patients. We have law enforcement who are trained to utilize Narcan. The Health Director coordinated with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to bring opiates and meth exposure training to public workers to Onslow County, and we trained over 250 participants, reaching over 34 agencies in Onslow County. And our county departments provide training to staff, as well as the public, to include flyers that list the Dropbox locations so that citizens can safely dispose of their medications that are unused. We also have a great deal of community collaboration, and most of these events involve partnerships in which the county department, staff, or resources were involved. We have a new Dropbox at the Rilo Pharmacy, which was obtained through a Project Lazarus Grant, in which the Health Department applied. It's the first Dropbox that is, sorry, first non-law enforcement located Dropbox in the county that's not located on a military base. Onslow Memorial hosted a take-back event in April, collecting over 11 containers of prescriptions and over-the-counter medications from residents. And in February, Onslow Memorial, in partnership with a hospital in Rilo, trained over 115 physicians, pharmacists, and mental health professionals during the responding to the opioid epidemic, guidance for healthcare providers. The Jacksonville Department of Public Safety hosted a series of workshops about identifying and understanding the opioid crisis in our community. There were over 57 community members that attended, to include county staff. The Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce hosted a forum on opioid crisis, where a panel of community leaders spoke, and over 50 people were in attendance. Our Commissioners and our sheriff were on the panel. Sneed's Ferry Hope is advocating at the state level for more training for parents of student athletes that are part of our community health assessment team, as well as the 4-H is working to establish the Health Rocks curriculum. And recently, a team representing city law enforcement, Onslow Memorial, the Health Department, community paramedics, and the Partnership for Children concluded a year-long Injury-Free North Carolina Prevent Opioid Academy, where they learned about harm reduction strategies such as syringe exchange and community in a lock zone training. The county and city continue to partner and try to identify funding options. Our future efforts? We look to establish the position of an opioid coordinator through our School of Government grant funding. We want to coordinate a more robust data collection and sharing, and we're excited to begin this internally through our county mapping project. We currently have the Health Department, Emergency Medical Services, GIS, IT, Department of Social Services, and the Onslow County Sheriff's Office all signed up to work together, and we have the appropriate paperwork in place to share information. We want to identify gaps and needs in our community, look at the gaps as well as the needs and the areas of redundancy, and we want to apply for funding to address gaps. We want to use our coordinator to actively identify and pursue other funding options and continue to partner with the city. We want to take every opportunity it's going to take each one of us, and I want to thank you for all your support as we continue to use the county staff to coordinate these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Board have any questions?
I just want to say that I think what you guys are doing is great. You're following our goal to get this crisis center up and running. I know its 50% completion rate right now for the renovation is outstanding, and I know that moving forward with the Trillium, to find a provider so that we can get this up and running in the future and start moving forward. But I have one question, though, and I think your PowerPoint is outstanding. All the information is fantastic. But one thing I'm noticing in here, are there any efforts underway right now to coordinate any type of educational briefing or training to our kids? In the high schools, in the middle schools? Because being an old narc guy myself, one of the best ways is to get in there and talk to these kids and to kind of, not really scare them straight, but talk to them and explain to them what to look for, what the dangers are and stuff like that. We may not be able to save all of them, but at least we can try. So I just want to know if there's any efforts or any discussion about trying to get the programs beefed up to go around and talk with the kids from a law enforcement perspective or from a county perspective?
Yes, I can tell you that I sat in for Assistant County Manager Sherri Slater in a meeting with Chief Mike Gennaro and Onslow County Schools. And there is a curriculum that one of the city council members attended a meeting out of town, brought back, and we are coordinating, working with the schools, to have them utilize that curriculum in their classes, in their health classes, as well as utilize that with their sports teams. They want to make it mandatory that anybody playing sports would have to have that information, specifically related to utilization of opioids and so forth. And it is, I think, a really impressive curriculum, and it's something that they've actually asked us to partner with. So that is something that would be in the schools. So I don't know that it would reach every student, but it is something that does address, I think, what you're mentioning.
Good.
You said that Narcan was administered 355 times. Does that represent 355 people, or were there individuals who received Narcan more than once?
That is EMS statistic, and so I'm going to venture to say that it was, it could have been given more than one time. I would have to defer to Mr. Grove Doll for that, but I do believe that it could have been given more than one time.
Angela, that is correct, because I've talked to both of those gentlemen, and they told me sometimes it might be four or five times Narcan was used on one person.
That's what I believe.
Okay. The position of opioid coordinator, is that going to fall under your leadership? Will he or she be in the Health Department, and they'll still talk with you, and you'll work with them, and they'll be under your leadership? Is that the plan or what?
Yes, sir. We know that we will receive $10,000 this month, July of 2018, they've told us. They've not said when they will dispense the other $10,000 next year, and so we will put, we've slated to put that money in the Health Administration budget. And so I will help oversee that. It is a part-time position, and so Ms. Slater will work with the city to help coordinate the hiring of that position, since it is, again, a partnership. But yes.
So that position will only last as long as the grant funding? It goes for the two-year period, my understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless we, again, our goal is to find additional funds to support that position.
And this is a part-time position?
Yes, sir. That's how we have it slated currently.
I just have one last thing to say. I noticed on the slide, and I was in attendance along with Sheriff Miller at the last forum that we had. I think what we need to do from a county standpoint, that was hosted by the city, I think we as a county, we should probably take the leadership role in this and probably host a forum, several forums throughout the county, because we have a huge county. I mean, whether it be the southwest area, Richlands, Swansboro, it doesn't really matter. I think we need to get out there and maybe form this and get a panel so that the public can come out and not just offer it one time, maybe offer it a couple of times so people can come out and get the word out, and they can ask questions or at least be educated on what we're facing.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, is the DARE program still active, or has it gone away, or has it just weren't effective?
I'm not sure. I would have to defer to Sheriff Miller. Yes, there's a DARE program? Yes, sorry.
Drug resistance education. Okay, I hadn't heard much about it lately, but I knew that was really thriving during my career in law enforcement, which was educating the students at a young age, too, about the ins and outs and problems of that. So I'm glad to hear it's still active.
All of the county departments that attend our meeting really have done a great job in whatever aspect they have the ability to make a difference and share information related to this issue. Even departments you wouldn't think are willing to provide education to the community.
One last thing I have. Has anybody thought about reaching out to Naval Hospital Camp Lejeune? Again, I was there, I worked there for over 22 years on that base, and I know that the Naval Hospital, especially in the latter part of my career, they were inundated with opioid cases and overdoses and things like that, and they have a pretty strict regimen in terms of opioid education, et cetera. Has anybody reached out to them to maybe possibly have joint training sessions, or maybe they can assist? Because I know the base is always looking to help the community, and that may be a way for us to utilize the resources that are there without having to pay for it.
Yes, that is definitely something that we've thought about, and we partner with them in several areas, so.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Mr. Cotton, we have a public hearing for rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will call on Mr. Ben Warren to offer the staff introduction.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a rezoning case located in the Sneed's Ferry community, and the request is to rezone property from community business to residential 8M. The property owner is Foltchers Landing Rentals LLC, and the parcel was 1,001-25 and consists of approximately .77 acres. There is unwasse water that's available to the site, however, there is currently no sewer that's available. Fire services provided by Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department, and the traffic count, the closest road is the Foltchers Landing Road, and it has an average annual daily traffic count of 1,100 vehicles and a current carrying capacity of 12,000. Just taking a look at the surrounding zoning, as you'll notice, the majority of the zoning surrounding this parcel and in the general vicinity is already zoned, R8M, and so this would be consistent with what we already have in place. Looking at the aerial, just to the north of the site, we have an existing campground, and the majority of the other properties in the immediate vicinity are occupied with single-family residential. In comparing the two districts, the community business zoning district has no minimum lot size or maximum density and is primarily intended for low-scale commercial-type uses that support surrounding residential. As opposed to the residential 8M zoning district, which is primarily intended for a medium-to-high-density residential and also accommodates multifamily and manufactured homes and manufactured home Looking at the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, this parcel is split by two different land use categories. The portion to the south in the dark brown is a high-density residential, and the hashed area to the north is a community growth activity center. And in looking at both of those districts and evaluating the proposed rezoning, the residential 8M is considered a corresponding land use zoning district for both the community growth activity center and the high-density residential zoning categories. Also looking at the reasonableness and the public interest, considering that the majority of the properties in the surrounding area are already zoned, R8M, this would be considered a reasonable and consistent rezoning request. So based upon those factors, staff and the planning board have both made a unanimous recommendation for approval based upon the consistency of the rezoning request with existing zoning in the area and also consistency with the comprehensive plan's land use map. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, if it pleases the Board, I will open the public hearing. The first person who has signed up is Mr. John Pierce.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and fellow Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Foltchers Landing Rentals LLC, and what we're asking for, I think, is very reasonable. It agrees with the comprehensive land use plan, and it is consistent with the neighborhood, and I think it gives options so we can develop the property in some manner that's developed around it. The reason early on it was zoned condition, obviously zoned community business, so it used to be a little business on the corner, and it was just a very small building. In fact, part of it increased in DOT right away, but it's been several uses from rentals to tattoo shops and other things, but now the owners have determined that we need to remove the building from the site, and I just think it's a better fit for the community. And I'll be available if any of the Commissioners has any questions of me, and thank you for the consideration.
The next person who has signed up is Mr. Lynn Hennett. Thank you, sir. I will make a call to the audience. Seeing no one approaching, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for the petitioner or staff? Planning board and the staff recommended it unanimously to meet all the criteria for the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, John. General items under Number Six. Grant funding from UNC School of Government. Ms. Lee, our Health Director.
Good evening again. As I shared in my presentation, the UNC School of Government and Blue Cross North Carolina recognize the impact that opioids have had on North Carolina communities. Thus, they team to offer a grant focused on the collective impact approach to the issue. The intent of the grant is for these organizations to partner with local governments to develop and implement responses to the opioid crisis. Onslow County and the City of Jacksonville submitted an application and were chosen to participate in the two-year program. There are no matching funds that are required by the county. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the funding from the UNC School of Government and Blue Cross North Carolina Grant.
Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Angela. Joint Education Funding Policy, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It was requested that this item be placed on the agenda for Commissioner guidance and direction to me as the manager, so I can read the action if you'd like, the recommendation.
I'd say motion to approve, just move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is something the Board has been talking about for some time now, so it's just time to move forward. Let's do a new formula.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just let me just make a comment about that. I know I spoke to Commissioner Price and Commissioner Buchanan about this, and the Chairman. I just, we're moving forward with something that we needed to address right away, in my opinion. Take a look at it, take a look at the statute, and try to get this resolved to our satisfaction as far as the joint funding formula is concerned so we can move forward.
Okay. So just for the record, the specific action requested is the Onslow County Manager is directed to research viable alternatives to replace the funding formula adopted by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education on 21 March 2014. In accordance with the directives and guidance of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, the County Manager is to engage in dialogue with the Onslow County School Superintendent, with the end goal being that mutually agreeable alternatives are to be presented to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education for consideration prior to December 31st, 2018.
Yeah, well, we have some groundwork and more detailed direction than, I think, probably what we need to do is, because we've got two boards that's involved, is to sit down with both the Board of Education and our board and meet eye to eye and come to some decision on what we need to do with the funding formula and make adjustments. There's been some legislation since this item was even put on the agenda through the state, so that comes into play also. So we've got a lot to talk about.
This item will be discussed in a workshop, correct?
This item will be discussed in the workshop, correct?
I would say I'm gonna have a hard time with any agreement that's gonna tie our hands again and bind us in funding, so.
Yeah, I think we really need to sit down and hash that out and work it out where it's commendable and doable for everybody involved. We'll move on now to item C, David Grovedahl. Contract with North Carolina Office of Chief Medical Examiner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Onslow County EMS respectfully requests the Commissioners approve a continuation of the agreement between Onslow County and the North Carolina Medical Examiner's Office for transports of deceased persons from scenes in Onslow County to the Medical Examiner's Office at Onslow Memorial Hospital.
David, what was the rate before?
The rate has stayed the same at $95 per transport, flat rate.
Is that all that the transport company gets, or does there differ?
That is. That's fixed by the state of North Carolina for all agencies. It's a service that we have provided traditionally and not been compensated for until we signed a contract earlier this calendar year.
Motion to approve the agreement.
The motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had a question about this, just for my clarification. I know the medical examiner, examiner, the body has to be transported to the hospital and because they have to perform an autopsy, but this is totally irrelevant in terms of people that die in nursing homes or anything like that, because usually the funeral home comes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Town of Surfcity Code Red, Glenn Hespin.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, David, Mr. Cotton. On July 2017, Onslow County changed vendors for its emergency mass notification system to Code Red. Code Red powered by Onsolve is an automated phone dialing tool that alerts residents, response groups, and disaster recovery planners and other selected contacts during emergencies and for other governmental activities. One of the advantages in switching to Code Red was the ability to share the system with other entities and government agencies. The Town of Surfcity has agreed to the terms of the inter-local agreement and policy for use of Code Red, and the town has signed the inter-local agreement and has presented the agreement back to the county. What we are asking is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the inter-local agreement for the use of Code Red for the Town of Surfcity and authorize the Chairman of the Board to sign on behalf of the county, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Some move.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
How many other towns do we have in Onslow County that are on it now?
The only towns that we are missing right now is Jacksonville and North Topsail. North Topsail we're in discussion with. We're also in discussion with, I believe, the College and some other agencies.
Jacksonville is waiting until their contract.
That's correct. They're waiting for their contract to end, to the best of my knowledge.
They have individual contracts, but it's our understanding that once that contract expires, they'll transition.
I think it's great that we're able to offer something like this to our other local governments and involve them in this project. I appreciate your help with that.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Airport baggage system upgrade project, Mr. Chris White, our Airport Director.
Evening, Chairman, Commissioners. At the August 15, 2016 meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved the project ordinance and accepted the grant from the Transportation Security Administration for the Albert J. Ellis Airport Baggage System Upgrade. To date, this project has studied alternatives and designed additional conveyors and systems associated with baggage screening. This system will improve baggage screening throughput, reducing the risk of flight delays and missed baggage. The construction has been bid, and the TSA proposes to fund 95% of the construction costs through a reimbursable agreement known as an other transaction authorized agreement. The remaining work is valued at $2,431,510.75. The 5% match will be funded through airport revenues and passenger facility charges. The project was bid, and Daniels and Daniels Construction Company of Goldsboro was the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of $2,167,000. RSNH has proposed to provide construction administration and resident inspection services for the project in the amount of $299,385, as shown in Work Authorization 6. The amended project ordinance includes these new revenues and expenses for the whole project. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the OTA from the TSA, approve the associated project ordinance, execute RSNH's Work Authorization Number 6 for the CARI services, and award the construction contract to Daniels and Daniels. The Airport respectfully requests the Chairman to sign and execute all documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. White. Laura Jones, you've got the next six items.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The next six items, 6F through 6K, are new offers on surplus land, and each of the offers have met or exceeded the minimum offer requirements under the new policy. And if the offers are approved, will be sold due to negotiated offer, the advertisement, and upset bid process. In this, the offers will be published in the Daily News on Wednesday, and other interested parties will have 10 days to make upset offers. 6F, the county received an offer in the amount of $2,000 to purchase land located off of Andemora Road. It's referred to as parcel 064001, and it consists of .83 of an acre in size. It's respectfully requested that the Board declare the property a surplus, consider the initial offer $2,000, and if approved, authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next, G, land offer.
An offer was received in the amount of $3,000 to purchase land located off of Spring Hill Road. It's parcel number 152594, and it consists of .46 of an acre in size. And again, it's respectfully requested that the Board declare the property a surplus.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Section H, another offer to purchase?
Yes, sir. An offer was received in the amount of $3,002 for land located on McGinnity Court, and it's referred to as 030867, and it's .15 of an acre in size.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Section I, land offer to purchase?
That offer was in the amount of $6,001 to purchase land at 122 May Patch Road. It's referred to as 015422. That's the parcel number, and it consists of .30 of an acre in size.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Section J.
J is an offer in the amount of $2,872, and that's on Andemora Road. It's referred to as parcel 015234, and it's approximately 3.6 acres in size.
Motion approved.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Six K is an offer in the amount of $6,350 to purchase land on Walton Road. It's referred to as parcel 029040, and it's approximately .72 of an acre in size.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Let me just say, as I understand, this is more properties on this one meeting than were sold all of last year, so thank you for your work.
There are six more offers pending for the next board meeting as well.
I think Mr. Bennet could learn from you.
All in favor of the motion?
Yep.
You've already done it. Laura, you got Section L, semi-annual report to the Commissioners.
Yes, sir. This is a semi-annual report to the Board of all the surplus sold during the previous six-month period, and whenever a department turns in surplus property, it's declared surplus and is made available to the other county departments. And when, it can't be reused within the county, that's when we go ahead and sell it, and I'm required to report all the items sold to you every six months. The total of surplus sales for the reporting period of January 1st through June 30th, 2018, was $29,596.54, and $13,264.65 was sold by electronic auction, which is GovDeals, and then the remaining $16,331.89 was sold in the surplus store. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the report for the period of January 1 through June 30, 2018.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ayes have it. I will say, for the six properties that we sold tonight, those were properties that were foreclosed on by people that had not paid their taxes, and we had the point now that we're selling those, and this was the first bid, and these were all to, like she said, up to upset bid. But if we foreclose on properties, we don't get our money until we sell the property, so that's what the process we have to go through. So we are slowly but surely moving forward with foreclosing and getting our taxes collected, thanks to Attorney Brett DeSelm and Laura Jones and the folks that worked on this to move this forward. Thank you. Howard Martin, our Animal Services Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton.
Sorry to hold you up there.
That's Howard. The Toyota Dealer Match Program awards grants to organizations that have received support from the local Toyota dealerships. Since 2013, Onslow County Animal Services has been the beneficiary of generous support from our local Toyota dealerships. Stevenson Toyota within Onslow County hosts one-day adoption events at the local dealership several times a year. These events consistently result in record adoption totals for animal services, and in December 2017 helped us clear our shelter of all adoptable animals that day. Stevenson Toyota graciously sponsors the cost of adoptions for all pets who find a family at the sponsored events. Their support has played a vital role in our success and is responsible for the placement of hundreds of shelter animals into loving homes. This year, as a result of their contributions, to Onslow County Animal Services, Stevenson Toyota nominated Onslow County Animal Services to receive a Toyota Dealer Match Grant in the amount of $10,000. The county approval to move forward with the grant was requested and approved. The grant application was submitted, and the Onslow County Animal Services has been awarded the grant for $10,000. There are no matching funds required from the recipient, and the grant is a one-time award. It is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners accept the grant from the Toyota Dealer Match Program. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is, myself, Jack, and it's probably several of the Commissioners that are sitting here know the family very well, and they have done so much for this community, and I'll probably get emotional because I've been knowing the family for a long time, so has Jack, and Robin has too. Robin's been very, his wife, I'm talking about Robin, Bright. Not right, because Robin, that probably does too.
I'm not his wife.
But they always get that confused, so I want to make sure it was Robin Bright. But there's a lot of us that have been around that family for many, many years, and they have done so much for this community, not just for the animal shelter, but everything else that takes place in this community. So I want to say thank you to the family.
Thank you.
I want to say one other thing, too, especially to you, Howard. A lot of people don't understand, and I'll just say, I'm an animal lover, okay? I mean, I have three dogs of my own. Well, actually, they belong to my wife, and I just kind of babysit them, but they're my dogs. And I don't think you guys get the recognition that you deserve. You guys out there work hard. I know a couple of your employees, one of them's a good friend of mine, obviously, who is retired law enforcement, went into animal control sector, and he told me it's tougher than being a detective, and it is. It's a tough job. You know, I think people underestimate what you guys go through and the hours that you put in, and I just really think that we need to focus, especially the community, taking better care of our animals out there, because I think it's pathetic when you have an animal, you know, when it's 98 degrees outside and they're tethered, you know, for three hours and no water to drink. I mean, I don't think anybody would want to do that to their kids or anybody else. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you guys do. I think you guys do a phenomenal job.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Howard. Item seven, Mr. Cotton, Regional Aging Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging is mandated to establish advisory councils to carry out advisory functions, which further the area agency's mission on developing and coordinating community-based systems of services for all older persons in the planning and service area. Ms. Marjorie Zima has expressed an interest to continue her appointment on the council through the next term and has submitted a citizen application form. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. No other individuals have expressed an interest at this time. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Ms. Marjorie Zima to the Regional Aging Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring July 16, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Senior Tar Heel legislator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143B as in Bravo, Tact 183.55B, the Area Agency on Aging is charged with recruiting and appointing delegates and alternatives who are 60 years of age or better to serve as senior tar heel legislators representing each county in the planning and service area. Mr. Gerald Brandon has expressed interest in serving as the senior tar heel legislator and has submitted a citizen application form. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. No other individuals have expressed an interest at this time. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint Mr. Gerald Brandon to serve as the senior tar heel legislator, Onslow County Representative, for a two-year term expiring July 16, 2020.
Motion approved.
Motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Move on to Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Twenty-eight-member Board of Directors governs the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. Members of the ECWDP are appointed by the elected officials of their respective counties in accordance with criteria established by the Governor. Mr. Carl Zural is currently serving as the Public Sector Representative with his term expiring June 30 of 2018. Mr. Zural has expressed an interest in continuing serving on the ECWDB and has submitted a citizen application form. The application is on file, has been certified by the Clerk's Office. No other individuals have expressed an interest at this time. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Mr. Carl Zural, Public Sector Category, for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2020.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Councils in each county to galvanize community leaders, local and statewide, to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. The JCPC board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners and meet monthly at each county. The following individuals have expressed an interest in appointment and have provided citizen participation applications. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. The applicants are as followed. I'll read the applicant's name, followed by the category, and to save time, all of the terms coincide and are the same of June 30, 2020, which would be a two-year appointment. First one is Ms. Kathleen Holbrook for Commissioner Appointee, again, June 30 of 2020. Mr. Darrell R. Veal for- Appointee, again, June 30 of 2020. Mr. Darrell R. Veal for Commissioner Appointee. Ms. Angela Lee, Health Director and/or Designee. Ms. Heidi Bauer, Social Services Director. Mr. ...
Oji Bobo.
We're taking bets, David. Go ahead.
Mr. Oji Bobo.
You might better spell it.
Under-18 youth representative. Mr. Vasco R. Sutton, Commissioner Appointee. Mr. Joel Churchwell, Faith Community. Ms. Julia Parrish, Police Chief Representative. Ms. Kelly Knapp, Substance Abuse Professional. Ms. Janice Steele, Parks and Recreation. Mr. Brendan Gartner, Superintendent's Designee. Mr. William L. Ross III, Commissioner Appointee. Ms. Jacqueline Powers, Business Community. Mr. Wendell Boykins, Chief Court Counselor. Ms. Tondra Davis Leach, Nonprofit Representative. Ms. Sherry Slater, County Manager's Office. Mr. Lenwood Foye, Sheriff's Office Representative. Ms. Precious Harrison Cobb, District Attorney's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners to appoint the listed individuals in the specific terms and categories, with all terms expiring June 30 of 2020.
Prior to taking his vote, Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this one in particular, since my wife is on the board, and I'll abstain from voting on this one.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As have it. Museum Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The purpose and goal of the Museum Advisory Board is to promote the usage and awareness of the citizenry in the cultural activities sponsored by the museum, and the Board shall assist the Director in obtaining state and federal grants for sponsoring programs or exhibits or improving the museum. The following individuals have expressed an interest in appointments. First is Ms. Kelly Andrews for the Swansboro category, term expiring April 30 of 2020. Ms. Linda Smith, At-Large category, again, April 30 of 2020. Ms. Susan Woodard, category At-Large, same term. Mr. Gregory W. Heath, Jacksonville category, April 30, 2020. Ms. Barbara Justice Rooks, At-Large. Ms. Diane King Barnes, Richlands category, with a term expiring April 30 of 2019. Mr. Art Purcell, Marine Corps Base Representative, term expiring April 30 of 2019. Mr. Ronald Bauer, At-Large, and again, April 30 of 2019. The applications are on file, they have been certified by the Clerk's Office. No other individuals have expressed an interest at this time. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint the listed individuals in these specified terms and categories.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I want to back up just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
On the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, do we have to have a motion to allow him to recuse himself?
There could be a motion by the Board, and the Board approved that motion. That would be the most appropriate way.
I mean, he didn't vote, but...
That's right. He didn't vote on it, he abstained from it. But if you want to vote on his motion to recuse, you can certainly do so.
I think it'd be...
So moved.
Second. All in favor of recusing.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Now we're straight. Just want to be correct. Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There are 10 members of the Library Board of Trustees who are appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. The following individuals have expressed an interest in appointments and have provided citizen participation applications. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. First is Ms. Beth Purcell, Military category. All of the terms are June 30 of 2021. Ms. Sandra Wood, At-Large category. Mr. Brian Jackson, Minority category. Ms. Sheila Joslavich, Retired category. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint the listed individuals in these specified terms and categories.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Secretary to the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission's Board of Directors provided a letter to staff requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment to the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission's Board of Directors. After careful consideration, the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission's Board of Directors nominated incumbent Mr. Matthew Cox and Mr. Jeffrey Clark to replace Mr. John Kopka, who is not eligible for reappointment. Provided are the nominations acted on by unanimous vote of the Board of Directors at their May 24, 2018 meeting. Again, it is nominee Mr. Matthew Cox for seat H for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2021, and Mr. Jeff Clark for seat G, again, another three-year term expiring June 30 of 2021. The applications are on file, have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint Mr. Matthew Cox for seat H and Mr. Jeff Clark for seat G, both terms of three years, expiring June 30 of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Section H, Mr. Cotton, Onslow County Hospital Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the last one. The Onslow County Hospital Authority, at its regularly scheduled meeting on May 31, 2018, discussed nominations for consideration to fill the term of Dr. Gobishan, which is vacant due to his resignation. Dr. Gobishan's seat number seven term expires September 30 of 2018. After consideration and discussion, the Hospital Authority Board unanimously recommends that the Commissioners appoint from the nominees provided. They are Ms. Virginia Albano, DPM, and Mr. Michael Royce Bennett. The applications are on file, have been certified by the Clerk's Office. Ballots have been provided for the Commissioners' convenience. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint an individual to fill the vacancy for seat number seven for a remaining three-year term expiring September 30, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recused from this vote.
So moved.
To allow him to recuse. Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you excused?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will now vote with our ballots.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Roy. Go out there and do some hard work for us. Okay, we'll move on now to item eight. Nothing, it was on the consent agenda, so we already, item nine, public comment. Anyone signed up, Mr. Cotton?
No, sir.
A manager's comment.
I will be brief. I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Okay, Commissioner's comments. Start with Mr. Royce Bennett.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I was able last week to attend a Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina seminar on energizing rural North Carolina, and we heard from speakers who talked about the effects of education, workforce, infrastructure, health care, and leadership on rural economies. Very interesting seminar, and I hope I'll be able to bring back some ideas to you in the future that'll be beneficial to Onslow County. Another thing that I learned last week that I wanted to mention is that federal tax legislation enacted back in December, the Tax Cuts and Job Act, House HR1, established what they called opportunity zones that will offer qualified investors tax benefits when they invest unrealized capital gains into the opportunity zone areas. In May, North Carolina identified 252 opportunity zones in North Carolina, and there are actually two in Onslow County. One of them encompasses the large majority of our business park here, Burton Park. The other is in downtown Jacksonville. But what that means for us, I think, is that there's some economic development opportunities and some tax benefits for anybody who wants to invest in our Burton Park or a large portion of southwest area of Onslow County, or also in downtown Jacksonville. So I would say to economic developers, bring it on, let's talk about it, see if we can get some more development going on in Onslow County. I want to thank everybody who's here and thank our department heads and our employees for all the hard work that you do, and I hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Since we were last together, we had our Fourth of July celebration. I trust everybody had a great Independence Day, and they were able to reflect on what a privilege and how blessed we are to live in the United States. So that was, I hope you had a great Fourth. Also, the North Carolina General Assembly, their short session has ended. No, we did not get a opportunity to increase our sales tax by a quarter cent. So when you see your legislators, we have an opportunity next session. It's a long session. So hopefully, as you see them out and about in the community, mention that to them, that you would be in favor of a quarter cent sales tax, just as a reminder to keep that on the front burner for consideration. And I would imagine it would come in the form of a referendum, possibly, which would be earliest we could do would be 2020. So it's imperative that if we want that, we'll be reminding folks early. Today was first day of school for those students attending year-round school, so good luck to those. I saw a lot of pictures on Facebook of little kids heading out, first time in, going to first grade and stuff like that. So that was, that was good, and good luck to them. Also, congratulations and good luck to our Onslow County coaches and athletes who are representing the East in the All-Star Games this week in Greensboro, and East-West games in soccer, basketball, and football. We have several Onslow County athletes representing us in that area, and coaches as well. So good luck to them. Have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you, sir. I'll pick up on the Fourth of July also. I was down in Swansboro, and this Board of Commissioners had donated $17,500 of tourism money toward their new parking lot. That parking lot was opened up on the Fourth of July. It only holds 45 slots, but it was full. It helps a whole lot with downtown Swansboro. The airport, there's so much going on at that airport. I know Chris White's sitting out there. We just had a meeting the other night, and there's some things that we'll discuss later on, because I think Commissioner Bright has some information that we'll be able to share with the public, probably even in the next two or three weeks. But one of the things that I want to do is thank the North Carolina State Forestry. I didn't know this was going on. They keep their fuel out there at our airport so that they can get to their equipment, their fuel for their equipment. But they actually, in kind, cut the grass out there, actually cut the woods out there, and actually bush hog with their big machines, and saves us a lot of money per year. And I want to thank the State Forestry for that. The other thing, too, is the control tower. If you haven't seen anything, it's as beautiful as that thing is, it is gorgeous. But the key to that is, is that probably August or September, and Chris can get me if I get this wrong, should be a dedication to the tower, is what Chris is working on. Everything out there is really moving along very quickly. We approved some monies tonight. That was actually not our money. It wasn't the taxpayers' money. That took care of all that. It's the FCC and FAC that does that. The other thing is that I want to thank Chris and his staff, and I guess through the budget, he'll have an assistant here shortly, when he starts doing interviews for that. That's going to be a big help to him. I don't know how he keeps up with all of it. That airport is really thriving. I guess that the, trying to think of the hams, that convenience that's out there, it's going to be, when is that going to happen, Chris? Do we know? Honey hams?
Next month.
Next month. That's going to be a big help, so you'll be able to eat the side out in what we can call the security area and non-security areas. But thank you for that, Chris, and thank you, your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to address the tax collection for the late taxes and stuff, and just want to kind of shout out to David and Sharon and the rest of the staff. Brett, a lot of people don't understand that, because it's a question we get all the time, what about all the delinquent taxes? But trust me when I tell you, they're going after them. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, when you get your tax bill, the best thing to do is either pay your taxes or make arrangements with the county office. And what a lot of people don't understand, when January comes around, they complain that they weren't given enough time to pay their taxes, when in essence, it goes out in August. So if, you know, people out there cannot pay their taxes due to financial hardship, which I totally, I totally get that and understand that, they can make arrangements with our government office, because they will see to it that certain arrangements are made, so that we can get those taxes collected. But I want to thank them, the staff, for aggressively pursuing this, because that's a thankless job. Dave, I think David had to calm me down a couple of times, because I was a little more aggressive than I wanted to be. But we need to get that money, because when a citizen out there is not paying their taxes, not because of anything else, other than they don't want to pay their taxes, they're doing a disservice to every other citizen out there. And to be honest with you, I don't take kindly to it, because I'm a citizen, too, and I have to pay city and county tax, just like a lot of you. So just keep that in mind. And again, David, thank you for all that and the hard work that your staff is doing. On the opioid crisis and the upcoming crisis center, I can't say enough to, about Sherry Slater, to Angela Lee, to all the staff out there, David Cotton, everybody that's been pushing this task force to get this up and running. You know, it was a dream initially, turned into reality, and we found a way to work around it and get the funding. And I think it's going to be, it's going to be very important for this community to have this crisis center up and running. We obviously do have an opioid issue in this county, in this state, in this nation, and we're trying to do our part here in Onslow County to address those issues. And again, I can't say, I can't say it enough, how proud I am of the staff and what they've done to make this happen, because they have really, really worked hard to get this up and running. And to see it two years, from an idea, from the funding process, to the RFP process, the construction process, to have it up and running within two years, that's remarkable. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and for your hard work, and I appreciate everything that you guys do. Monday, we have a workshop. Am I correct? We have a workshop from nine to, I guess it's one o'clock, two o'clock?
Wow.
Two o'clock?
Five.
Did you say five?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a workshop from nine to five, and it's going to be an extensive workshop. We're still going over some other budgetary matters. And is it open to the public, Julie? And I would encourage the public to come and attend this meeting. Now, you can't speak at these meetings, but you most definitely are invited to come and listen and to see the process that we're going to go through. And I highly encourage it. You know, I see the same faces here during the Commissioners' meeting, and I hear a lot of people out there say certain things. And I'd encourage people out in G-10 land and out in the community, if you're interested in the government, and what we're doing here in Onslow County, attend our meetings, attend our workshops. You know, I'd rather see you and listen to you up close and personal than to hear about it later on. You know, as far as, it's kind of like voting, you know, if you want to complain about somebody... of like voting, you know, if you want to complain about somebody, but you don't vote, then you have no reason to complain. And so I would highly suggest to all the people out there that are watching, if you want to make a difference, be part of the difference. You know, come to these meetings, listen, pay attention, go to the workshops, get educated. You know, I've got high school students that are more educated than some adults, in reference to what we do in the county. And I applaud those kids for doing that, because they're taking an interest. So I'd like to encourage all of you to continue to come out to our meetings and continue to come out to our workshops. Other than that, thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for all your hard work, and I hope all of you drive home safely.
Thank you, Vice Chair. He mentioned the foreclosures that we're doing, and we, right now, according to Harry in the Tax Office, for the 2017 collections, we're 99% collected on that. It's the highest rate of collection we've had in a single year. I know we've got taxes that's owed all the way back from 2008, but we've made a tremendous headway with that. We've collected over, right at, I'm thinking $2 million on that, of the money that was owed for 10 years. So we're really effective with that, thanks to our legal team and our purchasing property management. Commissioner Buchanan mentioned the forestry thing, that clearing that they do, the forestry, I just signed the thing tonight, to give them their money that we allocated to them every year for forest fire, and they go out and do plowing for us whenever the EMS or our fire departments get in trouble. Right at $60, $60,000 or $70,000 is what they would, what Chris would have had to pay for them to go out and do that work that they're doing for free out at the airport to clear that brush. So that investment is not only for fire protection, but it's for our own clearing for that runway, the ends of the runway, the heavy brush, like they have the equipment. So it's really a good investment. Congratulations to all the board members that we appointed tonight. We had a ton of them. And if it wasn't for our volunteers, with our volunteer fire departments and our volunteers for other things, we just couldn't do what we do without the volunteers. So if you see a volunteer fireman, or a volunteer rescue squad person, or a volunteer doing these boards, thank them for it, because we appreciate it. The Hospital Authority member that we appointed tonight, Mr. Bennett, or Commissioner Bennett, he will be serving out there. I've served on that board before, is really involved, and they pay, there is no compensation for it, that I know of. So thank you, Mr. Bennett, for stepping up to the plate and volunteering for that. Other than that, y'all have a safe trip home. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
We adjourn.
I'm glad you said something. I didn't know we had a workshop next week.